Give me the high sign here. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Six o'clock. This is a workshop with the Rockport Select Board and the Library Committee where we're going to hear from the folks who are going to be doing our research project, sometimes known as the survey. In our agenda this evening, we have first introductions and brief opening statements. We have a lot of new members on the Library Committee and on the Select Board, so we will all introduce ourselves for the folks watching on the livestream and so that they know who we are. We will talk about our desired output from the research project and then take public comment. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person, and I have my little timer up here, so you'll hear a little fancy music notes when your two minutes are up. And 30 minutes total. We're going to try to get as much opportunity as we possibly can with public comments, so if you can keep your comments brief, that would be great. Not on the agenda, but I may add after the public comment period is finished, I may, depending on if any Select Board members or Library Committee members would like to chime in with a response or an additional adjointure to any of the public comment, we can do that. And then we'll hear from Bruce Lockwood of the Portland Research Group and go into a question and answer period for the Select Board and the Library Committee. Any questions? Okay. So we can start with introductions and brief opening statements. I will begin. My name is Ken McKinley. I've been on the Select Boards since 2012, have been Chair for a few weeks now. And basically, I just want to start out by saying I support a new Rockport Public Library. The way I see it, the Rockport Public Library is on a journey which began more than 100 years ago, thanks to some forward-looking and generous citizens who established the library in 1914. Through the decades, additional benefactors continue to support, expand, and improve the library, and it's the legacy of all these folks that we have in our hands now. In more recent decades, town funds, meaning raised from taxpayers, have been used to support library operations, but the proceeds from a trust account continue to provide a significant portion of library funding. In the past few years, the journey has been a little more rocky, but only because so many residents are passionate about their Rockport Public Library. I see the research project that will begin to set in motion tonight as the on-ramp to the next leg of the journey toward a new Rockport Public Library within the next couple of years, carrying on the legacy of so many before us who left us with such a wonderful gift and the responsibility for its stewardship. So I will now go to my Vice Chair, Owen, and offer the opportunity for any opening comments.
Thank you. Did I get an email that we were doing opening comments?
You had the agenda.
Well, we just got it just now.
Surprise. Not without. I don't have anything prepared, but I'll just offer some quick thoughts. I agree with a lot of what Ken said. One of the things that I think has been challenging for us in these kind of recent months is the conflict between the Select Board showcasing leadership, which comes with a bit of a autonomous perception. If we're showcasing leadership, then we're leading. Yet, that kind of cuts out the citizenry. So it's trying to find that good balance of citizens' input with us trying to keep ourselves on a good direction, because I also do want a library. I feel like the community wants a library. I think that there are obviously folks in town that would prefer not to have their tax dollars go up. I just don't think that that's the largest majority of this town that maybe wouldn't want a library. I do think that the vast majority of folks do want a library. We just have trouble reaching consensus on how big it should be, how much money it should cost, and where it should be located at. And so I'm happy to continue to explore this topic with an open mind and look forward to, for hearing from folks and from the Portland Research Group.
Hello. I'm Tom Gray. I was just elected to the Select Board and so have been on the Board since June. My, the most important issue I think we face that is connected to the library is to rebuild public trust. And I come to this as a, I'm a newcomer to the process, but I think that many of us in the town realize that the issue of the library has been contentious, and it has aroused feeling on many sides. And unfortunately, we now need to go forward from a place where repairing public trust in each other and in the process is the most important thing. So I think that before I personally even begin to think about the best outcome, other than having a library, which I think is incredibly important, that our most important task is to make sure that we feel good about the process.
Mark?
This will be the shortest tonight, but we realize there's a great deal of passion out there from everybody with regards to a library. And I think that with us new people up here, along with Ken and Owen, I think with what Ken has outlined for a timeframe, I think of having something prepared for the June 18 ballot, I think we're very optimistic that we will come together and get something happening.
Doug?
I'm Doug Cole, just recently elected to the Select Board, and I'm just looking forward to hearing from our PRG group tonight and their recommendations and what they can tell us about how the town feels about the issue, so.
Thank you. And I'll throw it to Ann, and you can introduce your committee and if any brief opening statements, feel free.
Hi, I'm Ann Philly, and I'm the current Chair of the Library Committee and happy to be here tonight. To my left is Stevie Cumbell. She's the Secretary of the Committee. We have then Cheryl Lecty, and then we have Eliza.
Hazelton.
Hazelton, sorry.
I hate when that happens.
And then we have Heaven Bartlett at the end, so welcome. We have two new members to our committee and happy to have them here tonight. I'm not going to spend a lot of time with an opening statement, other than to say that, like Tom and like many of you have stated, that we really need to reach a moment of being able to go forward in a focused, pleasant, looking-for-opportunities kind of way. The Library Committee is very committed to getting a new library built and wants to ultimately be a part of that process in a very strong way, however that works out. We do have a lot of questions. We talked about this process already, but feel that we can offer the benefit of our experience, our benefit of people that we talk to, and that we are coming together to make this happen. So again, we appreciate your time tonight. And if anybody else wants to have opening statements, you can do that, too. Okay. Thanks. Can you reach?
I can.
Okay.
I'm Stevie Cumbell. I know most of you, and like Ken, I've been around the block a few hundred years with Rockport Library, actually only since 1986, off and on, on the Library Committee, with the friends, and also involved in multiple state library organizations. I reran for Library Committee back in 2013 after fairly lengthy retirement, partly because of the process that was happening. And let me tell you, when I jumped in, I thought, oh, wow, this is going to be really wonderful and a piece of cake. And my first meeting was a meeting in the same room that June, after-town meeting. I, like Ken, also, I'm committed to libraries. They've been part of my life ever since I was a little kid without a public library in the town I grew up in. I've lived in numerous states, worked in libraries in numerous states, helped start numerous libraries. And I'm, I guess I've referred to myself in the past as a library junkie, and I look forward to this process. I feel I've learned a tremendous amount since 2013 with this process, with the Steering Committee, with the citizens' groups, and with the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'm hoping to, as some of you have expressed, loving Rockport the way I do, the dissension that has come about among friends and also among governing boards and library lovers has really hurt probably more than anything that I've ever experienced in my public life. So I bless you for continuing with the process.
Anyone else?
No. Okay. Well, our next item on the agenda is a discussion of desired output from the research project. And I think what we want to be careful of here is, we have a professional here tonight who is going to talk about the methodology of doing the research project, and it's not necessarily appropriate for us to suggest how the research project is done, but I think that he would like to hear what we would like to come out of it with. And I'm happy to open the floor to anybody on the Select Board or the Library Committee if they want to. I mean, I can start if you like, or I have a lot of things that I have talked about, but if anybody else would like to start, I'm happy to do that also.
I'll only, I mentioned this at our goal-setting meeting. It's been just a little frustrating to kind of take a pause from the library stuff. I feel like the Select Board has in just these last recent months, but it was almost a deliberative effort as we transitioned from the old Board to the new Board. And so I'm really looking forward to gearing up as the new Board and again addressing this going forward. So I look forward to working this out. It's going to be awesome.
Well, I have a list. I guess I'll go down the list of what I would like to find out from our research project. And others can feel free to chime in and agree or disagree. I would like to know what the citizens think is an acceptable gross cost of the project. With the last vote we had, I heard from some people who were not so concerned about the 50-50 public-private mix that was envisioned, but they concentrated on the gross cost number, and some said that cost, even if it was privately funded, was just too much for Rockport. So I would like to know what the people think about that. And also the tolerance. In other words, most people have a gross cost in mind and their individual opinion and will end up with a range for that, I suspect. But what is their tolerance for straying from that a little bit? In other words, if it was a perfect project, would they be willing to say, okay, I can tolerate 10% more than I thought I was going to? Or, you know, is it 20% more? Is it 5% more? Or is there no tolerance for that in general? So that kind of data, to me, would be interesting. And along with that, with the acceptable gross costs, is what's the acceptable amount of taxpayer funding? In other words, bonds for the project? And again, I'd like to know the tolerance for that. In other words, same thing. If you think that there's X number of dollars, it's okay for tolerance, but here comes an architect that we choose with an absolutely perfect project that you think is the best thing that has ever come down the road for Rockport, maybe you're willing to increase that a little bit. How much is that tolerance? I think we also have an opportunity to help our eventual capital campaign fundraising folks to find out what is the willingness of citizens to contribute to private fundraising efforts at various levels. Do we have citizens out there that are a bunch of citizens that are willing to give $50, $100? Do we have a bunch that are willing to give a lot more money? If we can find out that information, that will be helpful for us as well, I think. What is the level of agreement among the citizenry with the Select Board vote to build at One Lime Rock Street? I think that's an important piece of information. Parking requirements. That's a difficult one, I think, and there's a lot of different questions, I think, around that. Some of the questions I can think of, how much premium dedicated parking is needed? What do people feel about that? In other words, by premium, I mean welcoming right near the door that you can walk in and you don't have to cross any street, that sort of stuff. How much secondary parking is needed? In other words, parking that requires patrons to perhaps walk a little bit, maybe cross the street, or climb a little bit of a hill or something like that. How important is parking? Is parking a deal-breaker for anybody who answers the research project? I also would like to have some information about the current memorial park site. In particular, what's the willingness of the citizenry to use this site as part of the library complex? How much of the park is acceptable to be given over to library use, keeping in mind that a lot of that might end up being parking? That information, I think, will help guide us as we move forward. How important is the exterior appearance of a new building? We heard some comments about that the last time around, that people were not happy, some people who voted no were not happy with the exterior appearance. How important is the interior layout of the building? And then my final sort of questions are having to do with, how are people likely to want to use the new library? And I put out a whole bunch of, wrote down a whole bunch of different things, you know, taking out books, bringing children or grandchildren to the library, doing research, attending programs, meeting friends, using the computers or the internet capabilities, just sitting and reading in a reading room. And then the final question that I wrote down to ask people is, what do you want to be able to do in the new library that you cannot or could not at the old One Lime Rock do in the present library? So those are just what my thoughts are as to what kind of information we'd like to come out of this research project with. And I would open the floor to anybody else to augment, add, or tell me that I am off the mark with something.
We have some comments here.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I just wanted to, if people had the list of objectives that were set forth, we kind of worked off those, just questioning and maybe some clarification. Do you know what I mean, the page that the?
The RFP.
The RFP, thank you.
From the Research Group.
From the Research. So the very first bullet point, just hoping that the survey could maybe bring a little more clarity for the basic support for construction of a new library building or not constructing a new facility. That statement itself, I'm wondering like how that could be worded so that it was clear? Does that mean that there would be a possibility of the old facility being renovated? Is that what they're asking? Yes and no a library at all? It just feel like we'd need to clarify what that statement is looking for there.
Okay. Well, I think Bruce is listening, so he'll, Bruce Lockwood is here from the Portland Research Group, so if you have those kinds of questions, you know, he'll take note of those now, and then he can include that in his presentation. But those are great questions.
And also wondering in the survey, how we can word in the most constructive way, no pun intended, on the location issue. I know you just brought it up briefly, but I feel like people are really, there wasn't a specific question outlined in this list of objectives, and personally, I feel like that's going to be a really important piece to allow citizens to voice, because that certainly was a big issue. I know you guys have voted to have it at One Lime Rock, and that's come clear a few times. I still feel like citizens are going to need a place on this survey to voice their opinion on that topic. And I think that it's an important thing to allow citizens that sort of choice in some way or another, so.
May I, Eliza? I completely agree with you. I think that we.
Could you speak up a little, please?
Certainly. I completely agree with Eliza. I think that, I'm coming at this issue from a perspective of relationships in the town. And my perception, which I have to tell you, I'm learning a lot about the history of the issue and about the logistical and financial and all the arguments on both sides about where to build it. But my perception, sitting here, is that the reason we have so much contention is because we haven't really developed a process that has people weigh in on the location issue in the most constructive way possible. And I think that that is what we have to do in order to move past the trust issues that surround this like a black cloud. So I don't know a more plain way to say it, but I think that I just completely agree with your sentiment.
Okay, thank you. Should I keep going with my list here?
Just on that point, so, one for me, just for me personally, because I went through a process of site selection, and so I settled on One Lime Rock. That said, if the citizenry will allow us the time and the space to again go through some sort of derivation of that process again, then I'm happy to revisit it. I could just imagine being a citizen and going, didn't you all already figure that out? If the citizenry gives us the space and says that that's something they want us to do, I'm happy to go and revisit that. And just as a side, I totally was anticipating there being a very distinct question on this, to the site. I just, going into this, I totally thought that that was going to be basically a standalone question by itself.
Stevie?
And with the site, when the location, I looked at this survey that the Select Board had agreed to and the new Select Board agreed to go on with, as going to a blank slate. And I think one of the objectives of doing this research was to attempt to find out why people voted against. Granted, it was a nine-vote, I think nine-vote split.
Tie vote, essentially.
Okay, a tie vote. So, and there had been previous referendums regarding the site, and in fact, which was turned down, the RES site, and a previous non-binding referendum which also said, no, we don't want a new library. So there is a history. But that's why I view this research project as a blank slate. And I think to find out why people voted the way they did last November, if location is not part of that option, as to trying to find out why people voted against or for, it's, I don't know what word I'd use. I think we're just defeating the purpose of trying to come up again to answer that question. Why was that vote? Why did that vote? That's, and I'm not saying it's the only reason, but why did, every possible reason for that vote turning out the way it did, I think, needs to be asked on this research project.
I think you're really right, Stevie. I think that where we are as a Board, and I can comment on just the few discussions we've had a chance to have as a collective body since the last election, we're in a place of having to make inferences about why people voted the way they did. And I think that it's more complicated than in one thing or the other. It's not just the cost, and it's not just the location. It's how cost and location and any number of other factors come together in a person's mind to have them come down on one side of the vote or the other. And I can tell you that from my perspective, what I don't want is, no matter where the library ends up, I don't want 20 years from now, people driving past a library, wherever it is in the town, thinking bitter thoughts about where the library is because they don't feel that the process treated them fairly. So again, I really agree with what you're saying.
Well, I guess I have a little different viewpoint than some of the folks here, I guess, perhaps not surprisingly. But when I was elected to the Board, and I brought this up at the Goals Meeting the other night, I honestly thought that the library location had been put behind us. There was a Select Board vote on February 28, 2017, that the vote was four to one to have the library located at One Lime Rock Street. And that vote did not happen in a vacuum. That vote was really the culmination of the four years that this process has been going on. So when I heard this might come up as an issue, I sat down and I made a list of people who had advocated for the One Lime Rock Street during the process that we had gone through. And these people are both elected officials, but they're also professionals who came and testified, if that's the right word to use, that spoke in front of the Select Board. And so just to go through it here, we had Jeff Parker voted for it, Bill Chapman voted for it, and not only did they both vote for it, but at the Candidates Night, they reaffirmed their commitment to One Lime Rock Street. Owen Cassis voted for it. In fact, he seconded the motion. Ken McKinley voted for it. As a new Select Board member, I would vote for One Lime Rock Street. I can't speak for Mark. He's, so I won't. Now, I'll let him speak for himself.
And don't forget Tom.
Well, I haven't gotten there yet.
All right, all right.
In terms of the professionals, our town manager has recommended for One Lime Rock Street, and I appreciate his support and willingness to get off the dime with it. Jamie Francamano, our town planner.
Can I raise a point of order?
No, well.
Is that possible, to raise a point of order?
Briefly.
Well, I thought we were talking about surveying, surveying, not going rehashing the discussion that's been going on for four years.
Okay. Thank you. I'm responding to comments.
But you're not responding. You're not saying what you want to see out of the survey.
Yes, I'm getting there.
Well, you're taking a long way.
Okay, let's let him finish.
Jamie Francamano did. Jane LaFleur, a professional planner, again, who spoke to the Select Board approves. Carrie Dewan, who was the Portland Planner, appeared on the video for that and recommended One Lime Rock Street. There was one vote against it, Brendan Riordan. Brendan, of course, no longer on here. Tom has said he's undecided. So what I expect to get out of the survey is I would like to see the discussion primarily of what the cost will be to the citizenry, because I think that's going to drive the footage. I would very much be opposed to seeing a question about the location go onto the survey, because I think it's going to be extremely fractious to the community, which we're starting to see this evening, and we're not even 30 minutes into the presentation.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on that. I think we have to not disregard feelings on every side, and I think people who feel strongly about RES, whether or not the library ends up in RES or not, would like to have a chance to participate and say why. I mean, it could come down eventually that the Select Board will, you know, make a broad statement. Well, based on all the things that were just outlined by Doug Cole and all of the other things that we've studied, that One Lime Rock suits the needs of the town the best. However, we appreciate all the effort that has gone into the thought process about RES. But I think it's important that people have an opportunity to state their case, and so.
Ann, excuse me. At some point, this Select Board needs to make a decision.
That's right.
I thought that decision had been made February 28 of this year, okay? And that decision was made, again, after at least three years of thorough discussion, where I came to meetings and I heard people advocate for RES multiple times, I heard people advocate for Lime Rock multiple times. The fact is, the Select Board said at that time, they were taking responsibility for this process, and they voted for that, so.
I understand that, but.
How many times are we going to hear from the same people?
Let's let Ann have her.
Hold on. One of the things that you wanted to find out is why people voted no, and if there's going to be a point where people can type in, because I oppose the site, then that will also give you information. You, as a Select Board, can certainly decide that you don't want to have any questions regarding another site. I mean, that's certainly up to you. We were just posing things that we felt that, you know, people might, you know, that we would want to get out of it, and maybe you, as a Select Board, would want to get out of it. You know, whether that question goes on there or not, obviously, is up to you. We just pose it here. I'm going to let Eliza.
Cheryl have her handle.
Cheryl. So, you know, I'm new, I'm not new to the discussion around the library or being involved with the library, but.
Cheryl, could you speak up, please?
So I just want, I don't know if this is working.
She's going to give it a try.
So I'm new to this part of the process. I'm not new to the discussion around the library, et cetera. But I think that maybe if we could just step back a second and sort of, instead of running the list of all of the individual questions we want to answer, you know, what's the big picture here? The big picture, I assume, is that the town wants to be able to bring forth a proposal on the ballot for a new library that is successful. That's it, right? So, and in order to do that, you want to know how the people feel. And the, part of that is understanding why the vote in November failed. And I guess also I would say the vote in November was basically a tie, by the way. So I get that part of that might be somehow trying to understand from the community, how many people are out there who will really never vote for this because it's going to be at One Lime Rock. And perhaps we need to talk to those who know how to construct surveys about how you phrase a question that gets that answer.
Well, that's what the professionals will do for us.
Rather than, but rather than the way this discussion was moving 10 minutes ago. Because, you know, I have to say that, you know, personally, since following this, you know, starting in, say, 2013, I was somebody who thought that RES actually made a lot more sense. I think that we've now been through this really unbelievably divisive, difficult process, and the Select Board did apparently make a decision earlier this year that, my understanding, would stand. I hope that the survey gets a sense of whether or not that's going to be a major impediment to another proposal in the library, essentially.
Well, I'm going to chime in again here, because, and my original thing, I stated it as, what is the level of agreement with the Select Board vote to build at One Lime Rock Street? I think we want to acknowledge that the vote took place, but we want to gauge what's the citizenry's happiness with that. Those folks have to be heard, because in the end, what I'm hoping for, and again, the outcome of the survey here, what I'm hoping for is that everybody, when we get through with this process, feels good about, as Tom talked about, the process, and say, okay, here's all the data. We've got all this treasure trove of data now, and we found out that the. We've got all this treasure trove of data now, and we found out that the library cost is, is most likely to pass is X number of dollars. Public funding is most likely to pass is X number of dollars. The citizenry agrees with the One Lime Rock by X percent or not. But that way, at least the folks who have a differing opinion will felt like they were, felt like they've been heard. And then hopefully, we can say, those folks who perhaps wanted a more expensive library, but say, well, this is the level that will pass, they'll say, well, I guess I have to accept that. And because I want a new library, I'm going to vote for it. Or the folks who perhaps don't agree with the select board decision to go at One Lime Rock, and, and if it comes back that there's a, you know, some large percentage approval of the select board decision, then those folks can say, okay, I was heard, but now I see what the data is, and I want a new library, so I'm going to vote for this proposal because I think this is the best way to move forward. So that's, I'm looking for our path forward here. What is our path forward to get a new library? A new library is more important to me than anything else, any of the other sub-issues. But it's the sub-issues that the community is concerned about, and that's what we have to find out from this survey information.
I'm going to take my turn, just because I haven't done that yet.
Go ahead.
You know, number one, I think we have, we need a library. I think it, in my opinion, should be at One Lime Rock. I have a question for Ken, as the vice chair, last time. When you, gentlemen on the board, made your decision, was, was the public input part of that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you had public input back then. I appreciate more public input. But where do we stop and start to move forward? And some of these things, we need to just accept perhaps and go forward with One Lime Rock, and go from there as to size and expense. I mean, because if you five, last time, used public input as your decision to keep it there.
I will say.
Is this going to change things much more? I mean, I don't know, maybe.
And I will say, and Owen can chime in with his opinion, for me, it was an agonizing decision.
And this one will be.
It was an agonizing decision because, because of the arguments that were so strong for both sites. It was an agonizing decision. I'm not going to dispute that. But again, with this research project, we have an opportunity to look at many aspects of a future library for Rockport, and I want to get as much information as possible, Ken, out of that. And I haven't had her hand up.
So, the only thing that I would say to Mark, and I hope we can go forward on our conversation, is that if we don't at least ask something as to location or how they feel about the decision of our location, we're not going to establish trust. We're not going to make them think that we're listening to them. And I want people to think that I'm listening to them, because that's a lot of the problem. People don't think that we hear them, they don't think that we care what they're saying. They think that we're just going on, doing what we want to do, and that's not how I want this to happen.
And that's why the outcome of the vote this last time happened, and you have three new members.
Right.
So, that's what we're trying to do, is move forward.
Right, and I think that if we were to just ignore the decision or ignore the question altogether, that would just be another stake in the coffin, saying, oh, they don't care what we're saying, they don't care what we feel, they don't care what we think. I'm not going to vote yes for anything.
Owen, did you have something?
So, because I'd, I'd really like to move on to some of the really good things that we could be discussing. So I'm just, I'd like to button this conversation up just with my thoughts. So, one is that one board, or one legislature, or one body of folks that are elected to do something cannot compel another body to do that, even the same body. We are not the same select board that made that vote. That is a vote, it's a binding vote, but the beauty of sitting up here is we can change our minds and we can revote on it, and so it's like crazy, but we can do whatever we want. So, we can't compel ourselves to do what we did last time. And then the other thing on the process that we followed that led us to making that vote is that we have a person who resigned roughly one year into their three-year term because of issues with the process that we followed. And he introduced the process. So, it just, where we have this opportunity to capitalize and utilize some of these great resources we have to understand the why, did we not follow our process properly? What were the most important things that we somehow overlooked? And I'm happy to revisit this if the citizenry gives us the space to do that. And I hope we can now move on to some desired outcomes for this research project.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments about the outcomes that we would like to see? I think we've covered a lot of the bases here. Does anybody want to add to that?
Ken, can I just add one thing, or which, maybe just sort of a question down the line for those who will design the survey? And your list was very comprehensive in terms of things that you want to know, and it, it made a lot of sense. I am looking forward to, I, I wonder whether we need to rank those things, because I don't know if you can get all of that information from the survey without fatiguing the participants to the point where you jeopardize your response rate.
That's what the professionals will tell us.
But I, so I think maybe before we get to them, it might be, I mean, if you had to do your top five, you know, what would it be?
I didn't do it, I didn't rank them as I, personally, as I listed them, I think they're all important. And I think I would rather wait and hear what the professionals tell us about design of survey, because I'm not an expert in that at all. If there's nothing else on this, then I'd like to move on to public comment. Heaven?
We had more topics for just our little chat.
This is, this is under desired output from the research project?
Yes.
Okay.
We had, and just going off of the RFP again, we had a little bit of a, I guess, disagreement with the last point on the first page of the RFP. It says, special facility features that residents desire sorted by those that are must haves or required, and those that are nice to have. We just, I, it was just kind of, I feel like we thought it was like leading.
Yeah.
It just wasn't.
And that's more of the design process than.
Right, it's not something that we feel should be on a survey. That's more like a, we're getting into the design, and we want to know what you think we need to have, not, we want to know what we want to have for size of the library.
Rick wants to speak.
To, to be clear, the RFP, the proposal and the response are general.
Just general.
General comments back. The reason for this meeting here is to get to what are the actual topics? So, because it was in the RFP, or the response does not necessarily mean that that's what's going to go
I see.
on the, on the survey. So that's, that's what we're here for tonight, is to narrow down and get those things right.
So sort of on that vein, we, if there's a way in the survey to have residents prioritize what programs they most enjoy, most use, some way to gauge, and then that will drive a little bit, oh, the marine room can be X size because, you know, tons of people use it or very, yeah. Some way to have a priority of what actually survey filler orders use.
Stevie?
I'll try to be really quick. That brings up also, and I think some of you have used the word, trust. And I think one of the things that a lot of us are holding at this point is the trust level in the professionals that came in to evaluate the status of the old building, but also the library professionals who live, breathe, sleep, drink libraries, who know what it takes for the kind of, what, particularly in regard to size or whatever, and yes, shared size, all that, I know it's designed. But the idea of, of building a professional building, I'm sure Doug would agree that, that surgeons would not allow a surgical unit to be built based on the opinions of those people who might come in and have surgery, but rather by the professionals who would be staffing and using that surgical unit. And I think somehow, there has to be a way to gauge some of what Eliza has said as far as priorities. But at the same time, there has to be a trust level that your professionals who are telling you, this is how your library is used, and these are the parameters. Granted, it can be a range of parameters of what you need to be able to accomplish that usage. So that's, and again, it is a trust issue, I think.
Okay. Anything else on desired output from the research project?
And when folks do public comment, if you have something, please don't hesitate to.
Yeah. So we'll start with a public comment now.
Just one more little subtext. In terms of program, can also mean the accessibility could slide in there too. You know, parking is a.
You did talk about that.
Yeah, but you mentioned that, just the parking and the size of those, all right.
So for public comment, we want to limit it to two minutes per person and to 30 minutes total. So it's, I'll call it a quarter to seven right now, so we'll wrap up at 7:15. We want to try to gather as much wide and varied public comments, so our researcher can hear it. Please try to keep repetition to a minimum, so if somebody gets up here and says exactly what you think, you can come up and say, I agree, and then sit down, that'd be great. So we'll start. And please, for public comment, you do need to come up to the podium. This meeting is being livestreamed and also archived, so folks will be able to watch it. And please tell us who you are, and, go ahead.
So my name is Bill Leoni, and I'd like to make a couple of comments for you. I think some of the things that I'd like to know if I was doing the survey is, first of all, I'd like to know why the library vote was defeated, or close vote. I'd like to know whether it was the, the design of the building. I'd like to know if it was the size of the building. I'd like to know if it was the cost of the building. I'd also like to know what the total project cost slash budget the voter would approve. How many dollars would the voter approve for this? Would it be a $4 million project? Would it be a $3 million project? Would it be less? I'd also like to know what the size of the bond the voter would approve. Would it be a $2 million bond, a one and a half million bond, or a $1 million bond? Or is it just 50% of the total cost? Or maybe it's not 50%? Maybe it's not a 50/50 participation, maybe it's a different number, maybe it's 60/40, maybe it's some other number. I'd like to also know what the capacity is of the town for private funding. How much would you donate? Would you donate? Would you, how much would you participate in dollar-wise? Would it be a $50 donation, 100, or 500, or 1,000 or more? I think if we get the answer to those questions, we'd know how large the building should be and what, what the budget should be. All of the other things that, that you're mentioning with regard to programming, that's going to come afterwards. First of all, we've got to get approval to spend X number of dollars to build a building, and we have to know how big it's going to be. The two things are tied together. And then we know how, how are we going to pay for this? And the question of the bonding and the private portion is very important. So I think if you get those answers, it makes it a lot easier for the select board and the, and the library committee to go forward, and must be time up.
There's your time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
It was very pleasant.
Very pleasant.
Just come on up to the podium and.
Lovely.
Yeah, you raise your hand, so, go for it.
Dave Jackson, I've got to get this thing. Dave Jackson, I live on West Street. And I have a few very brief things to say. I really hope that you're going to enter into this process of crafting a survey with a completely open mind, starting with a clean slate. I really think that we need to disregard previous votes and discussions. I served for two or more years on the steering committee. We came unanimously to the conclusion, after looking at five different sites, by the way, and hearing lots of, lots of professional, getting a lots of professional advice, we came unanimously to the decision that the new school should be built at RES. I am willing to put that aside, if you're willing to put aside, the fact that a previous select board chose RES. So, I think you need to disregard previous votes. You need to start with a clean slate, and everything ought to be on the table. The size, the design, the location, and the cost. And I think also, we should approach this as more about what do we want in a new library than why did people vote against it? I think if you ask people what they want, you'll find out soon enough, or well enough, why they voted against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
In case our research person can't write quickly enough, can we get him a copy of this?
It's all on the livestream.
It'll be on the livestream, it's archived on the livestream, yeah. Anybody else for public comment?
You can watch the whole thing.
My name is Gian Rosenbaum, I live on Summer Street. I have two quick comments. One is for, for, both for Doug. One is that while the select board in February agreed on a site, the select board, same select board in August, agreed on the three key parts of a library. Location, size, or location, design, and cost. And so I think by saying one of those is a given, takes away the look at that we really need. And the second is, I've heard now a couple of people asking you guys to, to do a feasibility study on donations to, to, for, for the, for a new library. And I'm wondering, that's usually done by specialists, and I'm wondering if PRG has expertise in determining how much a town is willing to give to some, to a, a nonprofit.
Is that an appropriate question?
Okay, thank you. Microphone's open, anybody else for public comment? Okay.
We still got all kinds of time.
My name's Chris Sadie, I'm a 21-year resident of Rockport. Just a couple comments. I've heard a lot tonight about cost and fundraising and all kinds of things. It just seems like we're trying to collect a lot here. And then I heard, let's find out about our programming needs later. And it just concerns me, because I think our programming needs are so key. And I don't want people to forget about the huge study that Steve Pagoni did for us a few years back. We know our programming needs, that we have so much going on in our library. And those of you that have been there regularly know, there's a lot going on. So yes, we want to know what costs people can bear and, and those sort of things, but geez, the programming is key. We know we need a certain level of square footage, and I, and we've seemed, and I know we got way into that some years ago, and people don't want to hear talk of square footage, but when I hear like just cost, and I know we have to talk cost, but we have programming. And, and this is a town that wants a library with lots of programs. So to just talk cost and what are, what we can bear, and not talk about the program, so let's not forget about all those other reports, and I hope as our expert doing the survey, look at that engineering report, that building has got to be torn down. Let's not be unrealistic, folks. We want a new library. So, we don't know size yet, we don't know cost yet, we don't know the proportion of fundraising, but I don't think we can ask 200 things in this. Ken, you listed a whole bunch of things you want to hear in that survey. I agree, all of them would be great, but then that list of objectives that were in the application from Portland Research with some different objectives. So I'm just concerned that there's so many things we want to hear from. So I think it's, it's a, a job that you have to get all of this in there. So, I think it's going to take some work to get everything we want. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Jim Ruddy, I live here in Rockport. I have a question about the scheduling of this research, when the survey would go out. What I'm concerned about is our tax bills will go out, and I think, Rick, you might have a date already. I, I would think you would. They, they went out last year, August 26th.
It'll be the end of August, the first of September.
Okay, or else, yeah. So they generally go out at that time. When is this scheduled, this survey scheduled to go out? And I, I just think it would be unfortunate if we were, seem to be asking an awful lot of questions about the funding of this and the financial part of all this. Seems like that's going to be the biggest aspect of this, this survey. And I think that's probably the most important information we're going to get out of this. And probably that's going to drive an awful lot of what we end up with. So, if that's the case, are we going to be sending out a survey like a week before we get our tax bills? And that could be a little unfortunate for a lot of people. I think because of some recent bond issues that just passed, I think we're going to have tax increases for a majority of people in Rockport. I know in other towns, it's the same thing. And some of those tax increases are considerable, some of the biggest tax increases we've had in many, many years. I've been here for 40 years, and I've kept track of this pretty, pretty well. So. So I think there'll be people very, very sensitive, I think, to the idea that they've been asked questions about spending tax dollars prior to them getting a report on their own tax responsibilities. So I just want to make sure that, I don't know what the schedule is and how quickly this is going to start, but I would hope that the survey would go out after the tax bills go out, so that citizens would have all of their own information to work with to honestly answer questions. And I just think that's important for all of us. And I think if, no, my time's up, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Bill Froelich. We've lived in Rockport for twenty-one years. What I hear this evening is many of the same concerns that I've been hearing for years. And what worries me about the process and the open-mindedness and so forth is that making a decision, getting together a proposal that is going to be approved by enough people so that most of the members of the town feel good about the decision has to be done fairly rapidly. And what I have never sensed in all of these years is that there is some sort of end to the rainbow. That it doesn't matter by how much the interest rate for bonds goes up. What is important is who has this room in the library, or where it's located, and what that will cost the town. I think it's very important for each and every one of us to look at this as a time-sensitive issue. We cannot go on for years talking about this, or I fear we will lose the support of a lot of residents for anything. You know, it is too easy for us to say, "You can be a member of the Camden Library for thirty-five dollars a year." Why do we need to spend?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Brooke Keough, Mystic Ave. So I'm just going to say that there was so much love in our old library. So many people talked about how much they loved the Rockport Library. I certainly talked about it, and in reading some of the old reports, I mean, the word "love" just came up so often. And, you know, I felt that pang in my stomach when Tom said, at the end of this, "We want a library where people aren't distraught when they drive by it." So for me, I mean, statistics are important for the various committees, whatever. I'm just concerned at the end of the day, here we are, five years later, at the end of the day, I'm less concerned, I feel, I can be wrong. I have a sense of where the statistics are, and I'm not sure that, I hope that this can prove better information than what I have. But what concerns me is how we put the town back together. So that's, that's the big thing for me, is how do we shake hands again? You know? So.
Thank you. Anybody else? We still have time left, if anybody else would like to, okay.
I know I'm not supposed to repeat what's already been said, but this is going to sound a little bit repetitive. However, I just wanted to share the experience that I had when we were working at the book sale a couple of weeks back, and how surprised, because I was all focused on books and setting up tables and all of that, how many people, I was surprised how many people came up to me and said, "What's happening with the library?" And I realized, and not everybody has been following this as closely as some of us have, but, so I would just say, "Well, you know, the select board has decided to do a survey," and yada, yada, yada. And then what shocked me was how many people said, "Why the hell don't they just put it at RES?" And I was shocked, because those were people that had never spoken up before. I'd never even seen them at a meeting. And I just want to say, as my comment, I think it's absolutely critical that we allow someplace on the survey a question about location. Because even though you all have made a decision and feel very firm about it, apparently there are a lot of people in the town who either don't know, or they don't know why, what were the reasons why you came to that conclusion? And I think it's, one of the good things about a survey is if you get some sort of conclusive number that says, you know, thirty-five percent think one way and forty-five percent think another or something, that that would give some sort of an answer to a question that keeps popping up like a whack-a-mole thing. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kate McClellan. I'm a resident of Rockport at Summer Street. I grew up going to the library, I have very fond memories of it. I'll be quick. I know this may seem kind of forward-thinking, but I would urge every, all of the select board members and everyone involved to also think about what we'll do with the data. I kind of have in mind that we probably won't find the perfect library, and that fits all the specifications just from the data alone, and that we'll suddenly find the key to success, but that will likely need a public affairs campaign to bring this idea and to sell this idea to the community, especially going to your point about bridging the community. But I would urge people to think not only about just kind of having the data and putting it in our pocket, but actually using it to talk to community members.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name is Richard Anderson, live on Lime Rock Street here in Rockport. And I want to go back to, I don't know, Rick, four or five years ago, we were out at the church out on Route seventeen, across from, from... the landscape place out there, anyway. And one of the questions that had come up at that meeting was, you know, the vision for a library. And I made some comments about, you know, the history of libraries being a place where people can go access technology that they can't afford at home. And that at one point was books, you know, in your private library. Ability to go and get help in, even if you have books in your library, you still need to help, how do you find what you really want to know? And so there's the expertise in a library to how to access information that you may even own, but you don't know how to use it. And, and so we leap forward, and at some point that became microfiche, how do you use microfiche? How do you use internet? How do you log on? You know, and, and that, to me, the one issue that has never come up in this six years of discourse and access to information and access to telling, learning your opinion, is what's the, you know, if we're talking about market research, what's the market for a library in this region? Camden has a pretty nice library. Rockland has a pretty nice library. And we're only forty thousand people, okay? And so, you know, I was in a business where I was trying to get newspapers and find a market for a newspaper idea. And I eventually was not totally successful with what I wanted to do. But the idea is, what's the, and the part of the problem was, there are seven...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, okay.
The chair could probably do that, Gian. I think we got the point.
Well, I'm sorry, I, what's the market here? And, you know, when we're talking about autonomous cars in our lifetime, and I'm, in my lifetime, and that's not very many years left, what's, you know, what's the position of a market? You know, might we have in Rockport an opportunity to create a library that is desirable because of its technical capacity, its ability to attract people, teach people how to use new technologies, access information, internet may age.
Thanks, Richard. Anybody else? I'm going to read one comment that I received by email from somebody who couldn't come to the meeting, and that was from John Priestley. I'll read it without comment. He said, "I have a schedule conflict that prevents my attendance tonight. I ask that you consider my input in the form of this message. The town has already conducted a definitive survey," in quotes, "on the library with a significant participation. It was the vote, and the upshot of the vote was a no to the library that was proposed, albeit with a slim margin. The problem that the select board faces is that you have no idea why our townspeople voted the way they did. I believe that before launching another survey, which could lead to who knows where, depending on the questions posed, that the select board determined the following by asking the populace. One, how did you vote? Two, why did you vote the way you did? If you simply ask these questions, which can be done through any combination of public forum, mailings, email, and personal exchange, the select board will have an answer as to whether folks thought the proposed library was too big, too expensive, too ugly, in the wrong place, had poor parking, or any combination of these. I have heard all these stated as dissatisfaction with Reed &amp; Company proposal." Respectfully, John Priestley. Does anybody else have any public comment that they would like to make? Okay, if not, then happy to introduce Bruce Lockwood of the Portland Research Group to make a presentation which follows on to his response to the RFP that we published for this work.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate all the comments, they're all very helpful moving forward with this process. What I'm going to talk about is, I'm going to give you some background on Portland Research Group, how we typically address projects, how we typically move through the research process. And then just some beginning ideas about the process for the research for the library. I'm not going to get into specifics about what is in the questionnaire and so forth, because I need to synthesize through all of your comments, the select board comments, the library committee's comments, and then put a, put a survey together that we can then react to. There will be some trade-offs as we go through that. So, again, so I am the founder, and I...
Hit the window again?
There we go. Okay.
Only the arrows, not the little window bar.
That's what I thought I did, but I guess I did the fat phone thing. I do that all the time on my smartphone. I've made up new languages. Anyways, so I established Portland Research Group in April of 2000. Just to give you a sense as to how long that is, my son was two months old, and now he's six-five and wears a size fourteen shoe. So that's always the time, the timeline for me. We're located in Portland, and we've been very busy over our years of existence. We've conducted over seven-hundred-and-fifty studies, both business and consumer, in-state, national, Europe, Asia-Pacific, all over the place. So we really have a good handle on how to conduct market research. And we are the first, we do a lot of community work as well, and we were the first recipient of the, in 2009, of the Portland Symphony Orchestra's annual corporate partnership award. And we did that, conducting some research for them about types of programming that they would like to bring to their audiences. This was when Robert Moody first joined the Portland Symphony as the music director, and we gave him some guidance, albeit that was part of the equation of the program and that he did, because every music director wants to do their own programming. But we gave him guidance on the appetite that the Portland audience, or the Portland Symphony Orchestra audience had for various types of music. And we received their award for that, it was very nice. And we worked with over a hundred-and-twenty-five organizations, both in the private and the public sector. So we have a broad, a broad range of experience conducting research projects, various objectives, and various types of projects. Yes. So I put, I included this slide just to give you an idea of the broad range of types of organizations that we've worked with. And just to give you an idea, Main Savings is a credit union up in Hampton, Maine. And what we found out that was particularly interesting with them is that credit unions always like to bring a personal touch to their membership base. But what they're struggling with right now is that they've got to bring access to accounts, technology, and so forth. So what we've helped guide them on is to bridge this member need for technology and for access to accounts everywhere with their personal touch. Because credit unions, a lot of their success is linked to that, the face of the credit union. So that's one thing that we've been working with them on. For the Portland Public Library, when they built their new facility right around Monument Square, they had all kinds of new space, and this comes to the programming aspect. They had this new space, and they didn't really know, you know, what is the position of the library in the community? We have all this great space now, how do we utilize all this space? So we did a very comprehensive survey with them. We rolled it out via paper, via web surveys, and we even did some telephone surveys as well, in four different languages, because there are thirty-five languages that are spoken in the Portland High School. And we got all this feedback from people who patronized the library, and we were able to develop a couple of, well, not a couple, but we were able to help them lay out how they're going to use all their nice space. And one of the big things that they came up with was, of course, the use of computers, internet, and so forth. And by the way, a lot of the young folks like to have coffee, so there's a little cafe in the front of the library now that was, that was a result of part of that research. So that was one thing. We helped them also disseminate that information around the city of Portland through different forums and presentations and so forth. For Ebedrola USA, that is Central Main Power's parent company, they needed a spokesperson. This, I've worked with Central Main Power for twenty-plus years now. And in the mid-nineties, they were kind of having, and I don't think they would mind my saying this, they're having a bit of an image problem. And they really needed a credible spokesperson that people could relate to and could become the face of Central Main Power. Because when you're a utility, your customers are happiest when they don't think about you, because their electricity is on, they don't have to worry about anything, blah, blah, blah. But corporations like to have a personality, because then they have something that people can relate to. So we did some market research for them, and we identified Jim Wright as a potential spokesperson. CMP tried him out, and to this day, he is still the spokesperson of Central Main Power. Every, when I do focus groups around the state for Central Main Power, they always ask me about Jim Wright, even if he's not even close to being the topic of the discussion. So that's kind of fun. I love market research, because you get to do this kind of fun stuff. So there's, there's some examples there where, you know, we've conducted research. Sometimes the research results exactly portray what you have in your mind. And that's not bad. You know, some clients will come back to me and say, "Well, I already knew that." Well, it's kind of good, especially if you're a product manager, it's kind of good that the research didn't come in here, and you were thinking way out here. So just to confirm that you are right in line with your constituency is a successful research project. So don't be surprised if we get the results back, and it confirms a lot of what you've been talking about. But what we've done is we've actually had a, 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 a public comment period that's extended to the entire community and has even more... to the entire community and has even more structure to it. So we'll have opportunity for free response and open-ended responses, plus some metrics, so like rating scales, some, some numerics that people can write in so that we can compare things across the constituency as well. So there's going to be a mix of those two things. So our philosophy is, and we're very serious about this. So our philosophy is, we work with companies that are startups through the Maine Technology Institute, so they're very small companies, not a lot of budget and so forth, all the way up through to IBM. So one of our greatest challenges is to be able to tailor our research to the type of topic that's being addressed as well as the client's budgets. So we take that very seriously. Data integrity, I think this is one of the most important things. And, and this I, I take to heart as being one of our most important jobs, and that is maintaining the integrity of the data. I, I don't know how to say this politely, I shouldn't have said that. But we, we will report what the data says. We will not report how someone would like to think the data says this. We will report exactly what the data says. And I will go to the mat preaching, "This is the data that we got back." So that is one of our very strong philosophical approaches. We try to be as clear as we can in the presentation of the data, and that everybody understands the analyses. Having all this data and analytics and work done on a research project is useless if people don't understand what the results are, where the results came from, understand and are comfortable with where the results came from, how we arrived at our conclusions, and so forth. So when you see our reports, somebody who's not even involved in the study should be able to pick up one of our reports, read through it, and know exactly what we were thinking to develop the questions that we got, who the respondents were, the process that we went through to process the data, and how we analyzed the data, and why we came up with the conclusions and recommendations that we didn't. And we say to our clients, "If you don't get that from the report, then you need to ask us because we'll tell you." And then we, we strongly believe in having actionable results. Market research is just too big an investment these days because there's so many labor hours involved, to come away from a research project and, and just put it on a shelf and say, "Well, that's done." You know, check it off the list. So we work with our clients as much as they need us to, to make sure that we can build some action steps as a result of the research. But our action steps will be research-based, and we look to our clients to bring in, you know, some of the feasibility and culture of their organizations to just tweak those results, you know, so that, so that the project can move forward. Does that make sense to everybody? Did I say that all right? Okay. So, and this is very brief, the research objectives I heard over and over again in the public comment. Our plan is to, is to obtain detailed data. I'm not going to go into detail right now what the questions would be and so forth, but that can be used to develop a public library proposal that Rockport residents would support. They feel comfortable with it, and they support. Nobody's going to be in agreement with every single detail of another proposal that would go in front of the constituency. But maybe overall, as a group of the details that we find out, it'll be a proposal that people will want to support and want to move forward with. And I listened to your public comments, and will certainly integrate those comments into the process as we move forward with the survey and so forth. You know, some of the things that we've been talking about, the, the, the physical size, ideas about how the space will be used, broad design elements, because I heard design, and then budget tolerances. Okay? And that comes with the, you know, the level of spending that people are willing to support, the mix of private and public monies and so forth. So I think we can address all of those things in, in the, in a survey. We will have to, as I think somebody brought up, you have to balance between everything that you want to get out of the survey with a survey that's a tenable length that people will be willing to fill out. And not just willing to fill out, but being willing to fill out thoughtfully. Because if your survey is too long, you can get fatigue at the end, and people will just start checking things off to rush through the survey. Okay? So we, we figure that a, a good length is about twelve minutes, when, and our tolerances are ten to fifteen minutes. That's the window that we try to fit in. We probably have fifteen minutes with this audience, given the level of discussion that has taken place over the years.
Might even be able to get sixteen.
Okay. All right. All right. And, and some of the things that I'm thinking of is, the, the, for something like this, what we like to do is we like to give plenty of room, I think I said this earlier, for top-of-mind responses so people can write what they're thinking and so forth. But you have to mix in those metrics so you can put a stake in the ground and say, "How do you react to this? If we put this in front of you, to what extent are you going to support it or not support it?" And so we'll have rating scales a lot throughout a survey as opposed to just yes, no, because we want to see the gradation of support or opposition. Because as we put all these variables together to come up with a tenable proposal, you're going to be weighing some of those scales as opposed to just a blank yes, no. I wrote some other notes. I'm sorry, I'm have my, um... Okay, I think I got it. If I didn't, I'm sure I'll be asked a question, so that's fine. Just to give you an idea of the process and who's responsible for what. So discuss the research content. That's a collaboration between Rockport, and when I say Rockport, I'm, I'm meaning the select board, library committee, the, the public, what we've just gone through here, and there'll probably be more discussions with the select board and so forth, and Portland Research Group. So that's a collaborative, a collaborative process. Then, once we get the feed, the feedback, the input for the questionnaire, we go back and design the actual questions. However, we do not move forward with any data collection materials without formal approval from our clients, so we would have to have the survey approved. But we don't want to spend a lot of time wordsmithing things because we've done seven hundred and fifty studies, so we kind of have a sense as to how a scale gets asked. Of course, there's going to be some things that people will want to input here and there, and that's fine. But, you know, sometimes we'll get some edits and we'll say, "Well, gee, it's better if we do it this way because of this, this, and this." We'll always give a reason if we don't take someone's edits. Sometimes it doesn't matter. Sometimes it does. Also, the order of questions matter because people get educated along the way, and what they answer upfront could influence their responses later on. So the finalization of the questionnaire will be a collaborative effort between Rockport and Portland Research Group. Rockport's going to energize everybody. We want to hear from everybody for this survey. We don't want to hear from just the voters because there are people who maybe have missed out at the last vote and will want to vote this time. They may have been registered or not registered. I'd say we would want to hear from everybody who is an adult eighteen years of age or older. Okay? We don't necess, we don't go for children necessarily because we can't solicit responses from kids unless we get parent approval. So that is very time-consuming, and time is money. So we typically don't solicit that. Unless, unless that's a real, something of, of great interest. We did do that with Portland, with the, with Portland Public Library, but it was in a very, a very casual way, where we didn't need to get input from parents because, and, and I wouldn't even go there if I were, if I were for that. Portland Research Group will manage the data collection. And I have a, I have a slide later on that tells you about what the data collection is. We do that because we want to keep the responses confidential. We want to assure people that we're not going to tell anybody who said what. We won't even know, well, we will. We will know who responded and who didn't. Nobody else in this town will. Okay? We will be the owners of that. And it's the only way to produce absolutely candid responses. Okay? That's one of the reasons you hire a third party to do a survey like this. Data processing, that's just coding the open ends and so forth. We do that because that, that's just part of our job. And, and when I say coding open ends, what we do is we sort open end or free response questions, the responses to, in thematic groups. And being an objective third party, we'll create those groups and just put that together. We'll do the analysis, obviously, and reporting including conclusions. So we'll come up with our own conclusions based on the research in terms of what we think the next step should be. And then that becomes a fluid conversation with all those invested in this process as to what the next steps are. But we will come with our steps and help Rockport use the results and communicate the results to the community. So one big thing about the data collection is that this is not a referendum. This is not a vote. Okay? This is an opportunity to bring public comment to everybody in the town. Okay? People who couldn't attend tonight, to encourage them to provide their input, even people who aren't passionate one way or the other about the library, we want to hear from the middle ground, too. Okay? So we want to hear from as many people as possible. And I'm hoping to work with Kate to, to get some of that energy out there in the community, to have people spend just ten to fifteen minutes and provide their input on a very, very important topic. Okay? And then the research will be used to develop a new library proposal. Okay? Whatever that may be. I don't, I have no idea what that will look like as I stand here right now. Okay? So we start out with energizing Rockport residents. This can be all of you as well. You know, make sure that everybody responds to the survey. We're going to mail survey packages to households, and we're going to provide and encourage people to use a web survey. So we'll include a URL that people can type into their browser and access a web survey that we will be hosting, and it's a much easier way to fill out a survey like this, and you don't incur the costs of, of a postage-paid envelope coming back to us. It's a much more economical way for people to respond to the survey. Plus, it enables a household that maybe has two adults eighteen years of age or older to both respond. Okay? So you, both of the people could use the web survey, one person could use the web, and one person could use the paper, and so on and so forth. But it's really a much better way to respond than the paper survey. But the survey package will include a cover letter. It will include a paper survey, as I said, and I guess suppose someone could Xerox the survey and have the two household members respond that way, as well as a postage-paid envelope. Because a lot of people, we've found, that if you don't include that postage-paid envelope, they don't want to bother with addressing an envelope themselves and putting forty-nine cents on it. So we, we take care of that for them. Okay? Now, you've heard me say more than one person in a household respond to a survey. We're very sensitive to people not filling out more than one survey, one survey per person. Okay? So we've thought of a number of different ways that we could, that we could handle this issue. You know, we, obviously, we want adults eighteen years of age or older. They have to be a resident of Rockport at least part of the year. And we want one survey per qualified resident, and we're going to ensure that responses are strictly confidential. So what we're going to ask respondents to do is just write, clearly write down what their address is in Rockport, and we will bump that up against a database of residents in Rockport, and we will be able to tell both that way, plus we have other ways of telling if a person has filled out a survey more than once. And we will eliminate the duplicates, or we'll come up with some sort of decision rule to take care of any kind of duplicate surveys that come in. If a survey does not have a street address on it, we propose to throw out that survey because we've asked people to do that as a verification process, and being a third party, we're confident in being able to maintain confidentiality of responses. We will make that very, very clear in the survey packet, as well as when you go into the web survey, that'll be very clear. Every, all of this will be very clear to people that is a strictly confidential process. There will also be an alert sent out that the survey package is coming. We'll, then you'll get a survey package, and then we'll send a reminder postcard afterwards to remind people who haven't filled it out to fill it out. We'll want to try to encourage response as quickly as possible. Mail surveys do tend to take a while to get data back, even to the extent where, believe it or not, for a, an accounting firm that we've done a client satisfaction survey for, for, I think we're in our eighth year doing it, we still get surveys back a year later after we sent it out. It's like, it's, we kind of have a good time with that in the office, though. Say, "Hey, look, what we got? We got another one." But, so we really want to encourage it all. But it really, you know, it's really to think about this as a public comment session for everybody. That's what we're looking at. And I talked a little bit about the analysis and reporting. As I said, we take very seriously that our reports are standalone documents, that anybody who hasn't been involved in the process will be able to pick up the document and know what happened, from, from, from soup to nuts. So we include a methodology section. How many surveys did we send out? How many surveys did we get back? What was included? How was the data collected? We go through the findings in detail, and we use a lot of charts and tables to present findings. We try to do it in as easy to manage and understandable, as, as understandable as possible. So we use charts and tables to do that. Not a lot of prose because charts and tables are more fun to look at than prose, but we do put prose in there so people read the charts properly, because some people don't read charts properly. And then we, as I said, we will present conclusions and recommendations so that you have a record of, of what we think the outcome of the data is.
What are prose?
Prose. Prose, writing, writing, narrative, narrative.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I would prefer poetry. No, I'm just kidding.
We tried that once, but it got really long.
It must all be in haiku.
So, so that's our process. I mean, it's a very open process from our standpoint. We, the only, one of the things that is probably the most closed part about it and may seem kind of strange to some of you is just the questionnaire design. It is very inefficient to write a questionnaire in a group. I've, I've done it. I've done it in, around a conference table with ten people sitting around the conference table. We had to order lunch in, we had to order dinner in, we were still, breakfast the next day, we were still sitting there because everybody has an opinion as to how a question should be worded. So it is most efficient for all of you to provide input like you just did. So I've got a lot of great input, and then my team will go back, will write the questionnaire, and come back to you with that. So, and that's where we are. Yep? So do we?
So this is now a time for questions from the select board and for the library committee. And I guess I'll just start off and ask, after listening to us this evening, how does the project seem to you?
He's still here.
That's a good sign, I guess.
I mean, I'll, people, that, that's what it means. No. We're going to have, because it's a mail survey, we have, we're going to have a real estate issue. Because you can get four sides of an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet, a cover letter, and a number-nine postage-paid return envelope, in a number-ten envelope, sent out with first-class postage. If we go another page, there's an opportunity, a bad opportunity, that could kick up to the two-ounce level. If you're 1.1 ounces, you go to two ounces. And I, I don't mean to get so tactical, but this is a fact of the matter. And that adds another, what is it, thirty cents? It adds a significant amount to mail it out. So, so it, so what, the way that I design questionnaires is I, I, I write all the questions, try to address all the comments that I think make sense into what we're trying, within the scope of the project, and then we tend to pare back. Because I find that way, less falls through the cracks. Okay? falls through the cracks, okay? The the last thing you want to do is drop the mail survey package, and as you're walking back to your office, say, oh, I forgot to ask this. That's the worst thing, even with a telephone survey. You know, a hundred interviews into the research project, and you forget that you, you you remember that you forgot to ask a question. That's just terrible, because then you have an exception throughout the questionnaire that, for that particular question. So it just, it it's just not a good way to go.
Any other?
Uh, Bruce, one thing that I was very interested in, in the length, which you've just said, and the number of questions, but also, on the bottom, when it got printed out of page two, I love demographics and geographic things. And you specifically said that you would, those questions would be done in such a way that you would address or be able to come up with comparisons for all kinds of things, all, anything in demographics or geographics. And considering that's been one of our most difficult problems with this whole process, the differences within particular geographic ranges and demographics also, how do you fit that into the questions? How how do you come up with those comparisons? How does that build in?
With, so the demographic, the classification questions, we usually ask at the end of the survey, because those are easy questions for people to to a- uh, to answer. And then we, one of our first levels of analysis is we produce what are called cross tabs.
Right.
And a cross tab is basically a table, okay, for each question, where we take different segments that we identify across the top of the table, and we run it by every single question. And I'll tell you, it produces a mountain of data.
Right, right.
A mountain of data. So we can, and then our our software package does statistical testing, so we can tell when there's a real difference between two segments, instead of just being one or two percentage points. You know, for all intensive, statistically, your vote last fall was a tie.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, it, nobody won.
Right.
Seriously. So, you know, so we tend to address those statistical differences more unless a, unless a directional difference, which is usually a a gap between two segments that is fairly wide but not statistically wide, if it adds to the story. And I don't want to get into statistics too much.
Can I, if I could just ask you one more question that relates to that, though, about your power calculations? Um, you you talk about a confidence interval of around three and a half percent, I think if we get six hundred and seventy-five responses, based on a twenty-five percent uh, response rate.
Yep.
Um, so is that confidence interval, that power calculation, sort of meant to describe the precision of an individual item on the survey that would be a binary yes/no? Is that what you're saying?
Um, it's it's actually based on the percent of responses. So it's three point, it's, I think it's three point seven five percentage points.
Right.
So you basically take fifty percent minus three point seven five, and plus three point seven five, that's the range?
I I get that.
Okay.
I have a background in that. But I mean, but I guess what I'm saying is, the power calculation applies to the validity or the precision, actually, of a single yes-no item on the survey, correct? It doesn't apply to a lot of these post hoc analyses that you're alluding to that would be done later, that might or might not be statistically significant, depending on how how many variables we wanted to look at. I just don't want people to have like, false hopes about just how exactly we could parse this out.
Right.
Because you could torture it all you want, but it may not, but very little of it might be significant.
That is true. That is true. So it addresses the reported percentage for one segment versus another. And the two segments have to be mutually exclusive.
Yeah, I think that's important for everybody to get here.
And and just, just, so, the closer you get to a reported fifty percent, the wider the gap needs to be for it to be statistically significant, okay? Out on the tails, like if you're reporting ninety-five percent, the gap doesn't need to be as big, you know, like ninety-five versus ninety-three, as it does when you're closer to fifty percent. I really didn't want to get into stats, but that's the way it works.
But I I also would like to say, I also wondered, well, did you, did you pick your desired um, confidence interval first, or did you pick your anticipated response rate first when you were thinking about the power calculations? But um, I would hope, I don't know what other people here think, but I would hope that if the town really does enough to hype this survey, that the response rate might actually be significantly above, kind of the typical benchmark that you're using for the calculation.
Yep. The two minimum levels we have are um, a response of fifteen percent, which is way below than what I expect we'll get, okay? But for for just generally speaking, we try to get at least a fifteen percent response, or else you have non-response bias really starting to 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 uh, cause some issues. And every unique segment that you look at, we want at least fifty observations. So we should exceed that as well with the number of responses that we're anticipating getting. So those are the two real basic thresholds that we try to get over, so to speak, the thresholds we try to get over, and we should be well over both of those.
And how much time do you want to give people to answer?
We usually give a week for the survey to to get out there, and a couple of weeks for people to respond. We we work in, depending on how our response comes in, is is, gives us the timing for the reminder. With web surveys, we're we're more strict, but this isn't, you see, we aren't going after the responses via the web, because we don't have enough email addresses. But web surveys, we will send reminders, again, depending on the response, but like, every forty-eight hours. You know, it's real quick. So web surveys can cut the data collection time in half compared to a mail survey. Easily.
Doug, you got a question?
Yep. Well, first I have to chuckle, because in my previous life, I worked with Cheryl, and if she was on your side of the issue, you would just sit back and, you know, let her rip. If she was on the other side, you would quake. So, this is not gonna be good. But um, I'd want to ask a little bit about the uh, response rate in energizing our respondents. Um, and basically, one thing I'm wondering about is, how much does the topic that you're exploring affect your response rate and your respondents? In other words, this is about the library. So, you're gonna get a certain group of people, obviously, that are interested in it. If we were talking about a lobster processing plant on the harbor doing a survey, you'd get a a different group.
Right.
So, um, I guess my concern is, is that when I look at this group here, you can be damn sure it's gonna be close to a hundred percent response rate.
Right.
And in fact, if you draw in their neighbors, because people will go, did you, did you fill out your survey? You know, you'll probably get to maybe one percent of the population of Rockport. So, how, you know, how are we going to energize the people out in West Rockport, Rockville, Simington Corner, who may not use the library very much, uh, to fill out the the survey? And and again, I have to ask, because Pat earlier mentioned her experience at the the book sale. And again, I chuckled, because my experience when I was out doing some campaigning, is a number of the people that said, the library? Well, we don't even need a library in town. And and so it's like, yikes, you know, where where is this all coming from? So, how are we gonna get a good cross-section of all the people and not just people that are in this room?
Yeah, I think I can take this. Um, we've started talking about that, we started talking about that about a month ago, was it, John? You know, with Kate Mc, you heard Kate reference. The goal is to try and get a group of people that will actually go out and do the work, and and promote it, and get people to knock on doors and do like you would it with the campaign, and ensure that people will um, take part. One of the things we're looking at is starting with a campaign that will just get people interested in what's going on. I wanna, I wanna have my voice be heard, put it out there, get some some anticipation of the survey coming out. Then there'll be a mailing, a direct mailing that would go out pre-survey, so that people would uh, get an explanation that this is coming. Um, Kate McClellan has a lot of experience uh, with community organizing and organizing big canvassing campaigns.
And Kate, Kate will be the point person for this effort.
Yes.
She knows that, right?
I've already, we've already.
I have, I have yet to speak with Mr. Lockwood in terms of the details, but Craig and John and I have met and talked about potential strategies.
Okay.
I don't know the plan.
Right. But we're, that's the, the, the plan is to get, is is, there's several steps to the plan, is to start with the getting the community interested, then a mailing, then um, then the mailing with the actual survey that would go out. And then, the with the work that Kate and others would be doing is, and it, it's important that that work be non-biased, and it can't be seen as it's one group or another group. It's people that have been disconnected with this whole thing, going around just saying, did you take the survey? If you didn't, here's another survey, or here's a link to the survey, you can take it, or a door hanger on the door that i- is a reminder if they go there that says, here's what, you should take the survey to to get response. Because the fear is, I think that the the people at the e- either end of this discussion, that we're hearing loud and clear from at both ends, i- they'll take the survey.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll take it. And if if only they take it, we'll end up being in the same place we are now. And what we need is, we need the people in the middle to give us their their opinions. It's the people in the middle that are, we're missing. And um, and I I I wouldn't, I I would estimate that we're, that 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 group may be sixty to seventy percent of the pe- population, that we, they go and vote, but we don't really know what, where they would put their checkmarks in those different boxes. So the goal is to get as many of that group to to tell us what they're thinking, because they're the, I think they are the key to this, to the, to answering this question for us.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the RFP. Um, what what are we expecting for a response rate? Uh, what would be an acceptable spot for a response rate on?
Well, as I was just saying, a minimum threshold would be fifteen percent, but you want to get a lot more than that. Um, we we, we we reported six hundred and seventy-five responses um, in our response to the RFP. Um, we hope to get more than that.
If, if I might, um, do you advise us as to how many duplicates you think you have? And if you don't, will you?
You you mean how many duplicate surveys we're receiving?
Right, you said you don't count them, but will we be aware of how many those are?
Uh, yeah, we could, we can tell you if you, if you would like to know that information.
Well, I mean, if you think there's three hundred and you get, I'm just, yes, I think I would like to know how many duplicates there are.
Yeah, so we could, we we can report that. I mean, we'll report how many responses, valid responses we get, and we can tell you how many duplicates there are within that.
The other thing, I, actually, two things. Is it broken down your questionnaire enough to know whether they are a taxpayer resident or just a voter that's not a taxpayer?
Uh, we we can do that. Um, I I haven't gotten that far.
I'm just saying, if you, if you have a household with five people, husband and wife taxpayers, three kids of voting age that are home, that gives another.
Yep.
And also your timeframe.
For the whole process?
After tonight.
After tonight? Um, well, part of that depends on.
On us.
Approving the questionnaire, questionnaire approval, and, you know, I I I'm glad we brought up the point about when the property tax mailing is going out. I think that's a, certainly something to consider. And um.
Best-case scenario?
I guess along those lines, I would also ask, do you have the information now that you think you need to create the questionnaire?
I think I could put a first draft together, yes. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it could take anywhere from six to eight weeks. So you see, we're into the tax, you know, the big thing is the mailing. The mailing, because the mailing takes, again, a week to get out, and a couple of weeks to get back, and you're already, we're at the end of July, you're starting to get close to that August date. So we need to have discussion about that, is I guess what I'm saying, on the fly out. We need to have a discussion about that.
Well, we'll have to decide as a board, I think, whether, whether it's, it's important enough to to time the mailing and and the tax bill mailing or not.
Yeah, I.
I'm not sure personally that it is.
Yeah, we we haven't had a discussion about that, so I kinda hesitate to comment on that.
Well, as as is appropriate.
Um, also, things to do to encourage response, just a couple of other things, is you can put a button. You can put a button on on the town website, the library website. I think one of the keys is to get a variety of different communications out, not just at the library.
And not just, I mean, I I get why we're talking about the timeline of when, because the ma- when the mailing goes out, the survey opens, right?
Right.
So, but I, I hope that at the time that the mailing goes out, we would also have, like, the button up on the website, that we would have posters in various places with a barcode or whatever, you call those things, that you can just scan and get to the link.
The QR codes.
Because, yeah, because I actually think, I mean, I I hope that this is actually a way to get a much, like everybody's alluding to, a much bigger cross-section of the community to participate in this discussion, not just the people who look at their mail in the mailbox, which is becoming an, you know, it's a shrinking group.
Right.
And and mailings make people mad often, too, whereas, you know, just seeing a link, if I could share a link on social media and people could click it and go to it, I think that's potentially more effective.
Yep, all those things can.
I would anticipate press releases from the town as well, so that it gets in the local media, both the online and the print media. All that we can do, and that's our responsibility, as Bruce said, that's our responsibility to to generate excitement about responding. And so, we need to think broadly about how to do that.
Right. But but when we go out with the mailing, the web survey has to be ready to go at that point.
Stevie?
I just had a quick follow-up with Mark, because I I I'm not like Cheryl at all, Doug.
Not many of us are.
In terms of the household issue, where you might have five eighteen-year-olds in the same household, and they, but they share one email address, and you can separate if they all choose to answer the survey that way? I mean, in our house, we only have one email address for two people.
But they'll know how many residents there are in that house. So they won't allow more respondents than there are residents in that house, right?
But I could, no, I didn't say that.
You can answer for everybody?
I could answer.
Don't say that.
But when you think about it, and as you, as you communicate this around the community, it doesn't do one group or another group any good to load the box, because then you're just gonna come back with a proposal that's gonna fail even worse than the first one.
That's true.
So it makes absolutely no sense, because this is not a vote.
It should be reported.
It's it's an input. So you, so it's in everybody's best interest to get as much input as possible.
Um, we're not taking public comment right now, but Jan's had his hand up. Jan's been chairman of the steering committee, chairman of the budget committee, so I'm gonna allow Jan to ask a question.
Very quickly, I have a post office box, not a street address. Are you gonna use every day, every door direct mail to, so I'm gonna get the survey too? Or are you gonna use the street addresses to assume that people get mail?
We have to think through that.
Good question.
Please, please think about.
Yeah, we have to think through that.
Or we like to get our mail.
Yep.
Good point.
Owen?
I've been holding, I've got a handful of things, if I, if I could. Um, so the first is, and this is not necessarily you thing, I just want to get it out there, is um, I guess I wasn't overly aware that Kate was going to be taking point on this, uh, or at least the community energizing. I don't have any um, question about your abilities to do that. I guess that I've always kind of viewed you as a person who was a pretty good advocate for RES, and I guess I'm just a little concerned, but we can kind of talk about that later on. It's just my first hearing that that you were taking point on this, so I'd just like to explore that a little bit more. Um, so one of the first notes that I wrote down was, you said, sometimes these surveys just confirm things. If you confirm how confused I am right now, I'm just gonna be, be very upset with you and your organization. Um, I have data integrity written down. Um, this is something that's come up a lot. We even have uh, previous select board members that um, are more technologically savvy than I am. At at this point, hearing some of the questions, I'm just gonna be putting some kind of trust that you are professional, and that you can get the right surveys to the right people, and make sure that they're um, responding accurately as to the best of your ability. Um, one thing, just along those lines, two, you said there were gonna be three separate mailers. One mailer saying, hey, you're about to get a survey, the survey itself, and then a post-mailer saying, hey, did you fill out your survey? You also talked about a unique URL. Is it a unique URL?
No, just a URL that will be a link to the web survey.
Okay, and then do they have to put in some sort of U D, unique identifying, something that says, and the only reason, I was curious if each one of those mailers would have that URL, so if you happened to lose the survey but got your reminder, you could still get to the website and fill it out. So if you happen to lose the survey but got your reminder, you could still get to the website and fill it out?
Yes, so, yes, the, so the reminder postcard will include the URL to the web survey. So it's, it's not a unique, it's, it's unique to that survey, but it's not unique to each individual. I mean, you have the choice to mail to households, which, which the town of Rockport has that data, so we can easily do that. And then just kind of figure out this number of individuals within a household, or you can mail to every single person, which is a more expensive endeavor, because it's more paper, more envelopes, more postage, and so on and so forth. If you did that, you could put a pin on every single individual. But we're trying to balance, you know, effectiveness and budget and all that kind of stuff and, and accuracy of ad, mailing addresses to, also. So we elected to, to mail to households. But we have a number of different ways that we can detect, do surveys.
That works for me, I don't want to get lost in the sauce. And then I actually really liked what you talked about with the Portland Public Library and getting the youth's opinions. And so though I'll trust in your professional opinion about how we would do this, in the first iteration that you bring to us for the draft questions, could it include an option for kids? Just so we could look at it? So something, on the, in the online world, I would say, you know, you would have the question, do you have a, a child that uses the library? And if you click yes, you get additional options to say, can your child please relate their thoughts and opinions and feelings, et cetera, et cetera? But I, I, again, I'll trust in your kind of professional judgment, but that is something that I would like to see, at least in that first draft proposal of questions. Can you work a children, or a child-youth option in there?
Yeah, so the, the kids, the kids thing would be to kids who go to the library. We wouldn't try to get the middle.
Right.
Ground there, because that's, it's not gonna be helpful. And, and it's a much more relaxed, like, we don't, we don't ask all the demographic questions. We just kind of ask like what, what they like to do at the library, what would they like to see there, that kind of stuff. So it's a pretty, a pretty informal survey. And it would be separate from the survey going to the residents.
So we could just have one at the library?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would work.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm the only one a little confused about who's, is this just going to registered voters or taxpayers? Or all households? So even though we were originally trying to disseminate where, why the vote went and how it did, now we're going in a broader of, which is fine, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, the thought being that, you know, somebody who wasn't registered to vote last fall could go ahead and register and vote the next time a proposal was.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So to get as broad a, a read as possible. And actually, to, to get back about getting the middle ground, we'll be able to, and, and we do this often, we'll monitor the results coming in to see if they are polarized at either end and just see how much of the middle ground we're getting. And if we feel like we need to get more middle ground, we can, you know, adjust the communication to, to beef that up a little bit more during the data collection process without biasing the results.
And I have one last thing, I think, for now anyway. And this is more for the library committee and kind of leading on to what Bruce was saying, that, you know, questionnaire by committee is, is, I'm sure, fool's errand. But for your all's perspective, especially some of the questions you asked earlier, I would be in favor of anyway doing that first review in conjunction with the library committee so that it's not, that somehow just the select board or small group of folks are, are approving these questions for the survey, that we would collaborate with you all on it, but not try to have it be a committee conference or something crazy like that.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy to include the library committee. It's, they're, they're involved, they're into it up to their necks, I might as well let them go in all the way.
Okay, and because I never got to ask this question and I'm curious about it, so you have done seven hundred and fifty studies, but with a hundred and twenty-five organizations, so you've had repeat customers.
A lot of repeat customers.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
A lot of things do, actually.
Any further questions from the select board or the library committee for, for Mr. Lockwood? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Well, I don't have a question, but I'd just say I think he's fabulous and I'm super excited that we're doing, taking this step, which I wasn't sure if a survey was even needed.
Yeah, thanks for making.
Really excited about it.
And I think, on, the next item on the agenda is next steps, and I, it seems like the next step is for you to go back and develop the, the first draft of the survey, and then I assume that you can communicate that with Rick. And when that's ready, then we'll schedule another get.